Okay. The meeting of the Everett School Committee will come to order. Mr. O'Connor, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Aberzey. Mr. Barrows.
Here.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Panerisi.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Sarni.
Here.
Chairman Parker.
Here.
Dana Lewis, student rep.
Here.
Okay, we have nine members present. We do have a quorum. If we could all please rise and salute a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the calendar. Item number three, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number three is the reading of the records from December 6th, 2021.
I make a motion to waive the reading, place on file.
A second.
Okay, motion. Motion is made and seconded to waive the reading and place on file. Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so moved. You have a motion passed this.
Thank you. Item number four is public comment.
I'd like to make a motion to open.
I'd make a motion to open public comment.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. There's a lot of echoes. Motion has been made and seconded to open up a public comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, seeing none. We are now open for public comment. So just for the audience, public comment is a 15-minute period where we grant individuals three minutes to speak as they wish. It's not a question-and-answer period. It's simply an opportunity to come and tell us what's on your mind. So be the first person, please. Public comment. The only thing that we do is we ask that you state your name and city or town where you live.
Good evening there, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen of the panel, first and foremost, I want to thank you for getting us the time to speak today. My name is Stephen Gashenrobin. I'm the vice president of the Custodial Union, and I'm accompanied by our president, Joseph Viedro. Today, we are here to give you an update in the view of the work and environment of the custodial staff are going through at this time. We saw that last meeting, hearing students, teachers, and many administrators speak specifically of the cleanliness of the building conditions really hit us hard. The complaints being presented, our valid, we don't disagree with them. Nonetheless, there are major factors that are playing a part in the current work environment. We want everyone to hear it from everybody, from the staff that actually does the job. Since COVID hit our city, our duties have become much more needed and severely changed our routines. We now must routinely sanitize every inch of the building per CDC guidelines, making it safe for our students to be able to come into a school, be safe, and focus at their task in hand, in addition to our normal daily workloads. As custodians, we take the safety of our students very seriously. The pandemic has put much more responsibility on our shoulders, and every custodian has stepped up to do this work without question. We worked entirely through the pandemic while most people worked safely from their own homes until recently. Keeping up with the cleanliness of the buildings hasn't been this hard before. However, to try to complete your job is very difficult when supply and demand is pretty low and we don't get our supplies on time and simply we don't have the right tools to do the job. We have staff paying out of their own pockets for supplies, simple as brums, dust pans. Custodians are using their own power tools to repair shelves, broken bathroom stalls, desks, shelves. Nothing has provided for us recently, and we feel as we must beg to get what we need to do our job effectively. In addition to COVID, there are factors that are compounding the difficulty of our job. The growth in pure numbers of students in each building and the reduction of custodial staff and other cleaning services are also hampering our ability to effectively do our jobs. Before COVID, we had a great rotation in how our buildings were cleaned and never had the volume of complaints that we're having currently. The dismissal of the overnight cleaning company we had for the high school and the cuts of our house workers has reduced our staff by at least 26 people. Now we are shorthanded during the day and the night. So for all the blame to be put on the remaining custodial staff is simply not fair as we're working our hardest, trying to best to maintain a high standard of cleanliness throughout the buildings. And also, we have staff members daily being pulled out of their schools to do different tasks, which avoids them to be able to do their daily duties in their own buildings. Further, if we didn't have great members of the teachers' union that offered to help work with us as a team, as one, as we all should be, things would be way worse. For that, we are grateful to the teachers' union members that help us out. To summarize, the work in the day in the custodian's shoes isn't easy right now. From lack of supplies, custodial staff, increasing student populations, TikTok challenges that promote destruction of school property and COVID, there's a lot more work to do with only so many hours in a day to complete it. Well, it's refreshing our memory. Friday, even though the threat was non-creditable from the social media TikTok, the custodians took time out of their day to become security for our students, to make sure that their livelihood was safe because they're in our hands. Custodians are only human. Most of us have been affected by COVID in the same ways as many other staff, students, families, yet we show up to work every single day under these circumstances, ready to do our jobs. We're not here to make cost of demands, but I would like to end with a few suggestions for the custodial staff so they help us do our job more effectively in the future. Let's bring back the way buildings were cared for before COVID. Bring back the overnight high school company and our house workers that were a step away from being represented by this local here with us custodians. Buy or replace basic supplies in a timely manner and possibly purchase a comprehensive toolset for each building so custodians and teachers are not using their own money out of their own pocket to purchase these supplies. Lastly, before people are quick to judge the way we work, don't judge a book by its cover. Open it, read a few chapters, get to know us a little bit because we have a huge impact on an entire staff, student, and administration. We want the same things everybody else wants. We want clean schools, safe environments, a fair and equitable workplace for everybody. We just don't want to be treated as pot. We want to be treated as pot as a team and not just a group that does things that goes unnoticed. And we want to go back to looking like the best district that every other district around us looked at us because of our presentation and how good we looked prior to COVID. I would like to thank you all for your time. Respectfully, and respectfully, I ask you to consider what was said here today. Thank you again. I hope everybody's family is well, and I hope everybody enjoys their upcoming holiday season.
Thank you for your time. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
We just had one person signed up, Chairman.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on public comment? Anybody else here that would like to speak on public comment? Last time. Anybody else for public comment? Ladies and gentlemen, it was a pleasure.
I'd make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Motion carries. Number five, reported to Superintendent. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number five is the report of the superintendent. And first tonight, we have a presentation of awards of appreciation to the outgoing members of the school committee for their dedication to the students of the Everett Public Schools. Tonight marks our last meeting of the year and the final time that this school committee will meet as it is presently constituted. Obviously, I cannot let this opportunity pass without thanking the members who won't be with us when we begin a new chapter in January of 2022. Mr. Panerisi has served our district for 10 terms, beginning in 2001. Mr. Parker is in concluding his sixth term, having been first elected in 2003. Prior to that, he served on the common council from 1985 through 1995. Mr. Aberzey has served two stints on the school committee, totaling seven terms from 1997 through 2001, and again from 2013 until the present. And Dana Murray, a Boston Public Schools teacher and a current EPS parent, joined the committee in 2019. As my tenure here was getting underway. Together, you represent a priceless amount of experience and expertise. You deserve our thanks for that and for the countless hours you have devoted to this job. And I have to extend my deepest personal gratitude to all of you. I have relied on your guidance and your good judgment. I have taken great solace in knowing that your first and last priority are the students, staff, and families of the Everett Public Schools. I have valued your honesty and your ability to make me think about something from various perspectives. I was grateful to you for your humor and patience. It was an honor to have you by my side during my first two years as superintendent. Your viewpoints, perspectives, thoughts, ideas, and questions were particularly helpful as we entered and endured the pandemic. COVID-19 demanded that we develop new plans and contingencies, and it asked us to imagine realities and scenarios we had never contemplated and still does. This added emphasis and urgency to our work. The four of you and this committee were an invaluable support to me and my staff. You approached our work urgently but methodically. You were flexible, creative, and supportive. During our last meeting, Stacy Rizzo of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees made a lighthearted comment, but gracious comment, about how, quote, "fancy" we are. Actually, took quite a great bit of pride in that. Our meetings are important because this committee is important, and they make our meetings important. I hope your experience working with me has been half as professionally satisfying as it was for me to be able to collaborate with all of you. At this point, I would like to be able to make a presentation of plaques to Chairman Parker, Vice Chairman Aberzey, Mr. Panerisi, and Ms. Murray.
Mr. Parker.
Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if this committee would indulge me, I would like to say a few words about a lifelong friend of mine, Alan Panerisi, who is retiring this evening and soon to retire from his regular job as well. Alan and I grew up across the street from each other. And funny story. When I left Ward 1, Alan told the story tonight. I took my shoes off. At the school committee Ward 1, I took my shoes off, and I said, "Here, Alan, you need to fill these." And he did, and that was 20 years ago. And now, just so happens, he stepped out, and I'm going to try to fill his shoes, and those are going to be big shoes to fill. Alan's a lifelong resident of not just Everett, but of Ward 1. He graduated from Everett High in '74, served 20 years on this board. He also served his two years as chairman. He served on the Everett Building Commission during the time that we're building the new schools, and he was the liaison between the schools and the city. He's done a lot of things in the city. He's Everett through and through. Served in the Everett Recreation Commission, coached Eagles, Pop Warner for 24 years, coached youth baseball, Cal Ripken. Think he's been around children a lot in his lifetime. Currently, he's the clinical leader respiratory therapist at Cambridge Health Alliance, right here in Everett, as we know it, aka Wyden Hospital. And he's been working there since 1979. For the past almost two years, Alan's life has been totally challenged by COVID-19 in caring for the patients, working countless hours. Alan kept us aware of how this pandemic was so serious and so horrific and confirmed the need to take every precaution to stay healthy. Alan is married to the amazing Carol Parisi Panerisi. They have two sons who both work in the medical profession. Alan and Carol are also the happy and proud grandparents of five grandchildren. Alan has accomplished many wonderful things in his lifetime, and we all wish him well. And he deserves the best and a very happy, healthy, and long retirement to you, Alan. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to extend my gratitude to the four of you. Of course, to Mr. Panerisi, great friend, Ms. Murray, to you, Mr. Chairman, and to you, Mr. Vice Chairman. When I joined the school committee as an appointed member, you, except Ms. Murray, had no clue who I was. And you voted for me. You put your trust on me, at least on the second time, that I was reappointed. And we've been working since. We had no clue of, with the difficulties and the barriers that we were going through. We had no clue that we would have to hire a new superintendent. We had no clue that we were going through a pandemic worldwide that none of us knew what we are going to do and still don't know, as we are still facing this pandemic. But you always kept your head high and above all, politics and issues and rumors and lies. And all the issues that happen, always putting your work, your words, your hard work on behalf of our kids. And I felt especially thankful because I see myself in one of our kids, coming to a country that was not mine, learning a language that was not mine, and achieving the American dream. That's why I see in our kids, I see myself. And you all worked really hard throughout these years, over decades in this committee, on behalf of those kids, on behalf of those, you know, the marcony from yesterday. And I'm very grateful for that. So thank you for what you have done. Thank you for what I know you will continue to do. You're not dying. You're just leaving the school committee. But you will continue to be, you know, residents of the city. Please do not move out. And we need you in this work still and we continue to do. So my sincere gratitude for all that you have done for the Everett Public Schools, for our kids, for our families, and for our staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay. Before we move on to the next item of business on the superintendent's report, can I recognize Mr. Aberzey? Mr. Aberzey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you've been around too long. When, unfortunately, a kid from a fantastic family, former teacher. I had the pleasure of meeting him, coaching him, introducing him to football many, many years ago. Fantastic young man. Rinaldi Adet passed away, I believe it was within the last two weeks. Just a shocking, shocking development. Loved him, loved his family, fantastic people. Just a quick story about Rinaldi that I have to tell. He was on my Pop Warner team, had never played football before. We went to Florida to play for the national championship. We were playing against a team from Florida. We were up against it. We ran into something that we'd never experienced before, and we were losing by four or five touchdowns with just a few minutes left in the game. And the type of kid Rinaldi was, Rinaldi was playing the far defensive end. The quarterback ruled that way. Again, we're losing by five touchdowns. And Rinaldi, I still to this day remember Rinaldi sprinting all the way across the field and tackling this kid from behind in an absolutely meaningless moment to this result of the game, but a meaningful moment in terms of just a person's life, what he stood for, and the kind of kid he was. And that's when he was 12 years old. And he was always that way, 20-something years later. So I respectfully request a moment of silence in memory of Rinaldi, if we could.
Cardello, please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Aberzey. Madam Superintendent, if you could resort back to the regular calendar, please.
Thank you. So item number two is the superintendent's update. Okay, so as usual, we have a typically robust presentation. We have an exciting program planned for the Devon School students that we want to share with you. We received great coverage in a front-page story on the Boston Globe. We have a new book director to introduce, a toy drive to spotlight, an internship program to promote, and a thank you to pass along from one of our community-based organizations. Finally, we have two members of our central office team with us to talk about the state's teacher diversification program that we are leveraging for maximum impact. So special thanks to the Parlance School first-grade teachers, Allison Pietelli and Ashley Emanuel and bilingual co-teacher Alyssa Allen for opening the doors of their classroom to the Boston Globe education reporter Jenna Russell. The result was a large front-page story in the November 29th edition of the Globe that features fantastic photos and thoughtful and insightful quotes from Ms. Pietelli, Ms. Allen, and Principal Dennis Lynch. The article examined the transformation teachers orchestrated over the first third of the 2021-2022 school year, from the emotional and challenging reacclimation process in September to the slow but steady gains that were made in November and to the blast tax of addressing and overcoming learning loss. Teachers, our teachers are all being challenged in ways that they never have before. So I just wanted to thank everyone who made this article possible. If you have not read it, please do. It is an honest and uplifting portrayal of what we are accomplishing in our classrooms. And now I'd like to talk about Project Wayfinder, the social and emotional wellness curriculum that we're utilizing for 7th and 8th graders. EPS faculty identified the need for a high-quality SEL curriculum tool that's differentiated specifically for our middle school students. The effort was led by the Caverian School, which identified Project Wayfinder as being the most useful. So we purchased a one-year pilot license for 7th and 8th grades across the district. One of the best attributes of Wayfinder is that it's very flexible, so it can be used to teach components during an SEL instructional block, or it can integrate it into core academic instruction through kind of like a plug-and-play activity library. Similarly, Wayfinder can be implemented in different ways, whether it is by an individual teacher, by a grade-level team, or even by the entire 7th and 8th grade and in a whole school. Wayfinder also allows teachers to identify student progress in real-time and respond with useful lessons. And it allows educators to check in on their students' well-being on the Wayfinder app, view real-time data on the dashboard feature, and then follow up with suggested activities from the Wayfinder Activity Library that's based on demonstrated student need. Finally, Wayfinder activities and lessons do not require our staff to have prior SEL training or experience. The orientation process takes less than an hour, at which time our teachers can tap into the resources, plans, strategies, et cetera. And I look forward to keeping you apprised of how this curriculum is rolled out in our 7th and 8th grade classrooms. We are also thrilled to be funding a partnership between Windrush Farms and the Devon School. Windrush Farms, which is located in North Andover, offers high-quality horseback riding to students with physical, cognitive, and emotional challenges. So starting in January and continuing for the balance of the school year, we'll be sending Devon students to North Andover. We will send students to Windrush in groups of five, and every group will make three trips to North Andover. So this is a really expansive opportunity. This is a voluntary opportunity available to all Devon students. Principal Brian Wallace and his team have done an amazing job of clearly communicating this opportunity with our students and families and have distributed and collected very comprehensive consent documentation. The EPS is offering this at no cost to our students or families, including obviously the transportation. So Devon staff will accompany students to these sessions. Right now, the schedule calls for a departure between 9:00 and 9:30 a.m. with a return of no later than 1:00 p.m. So the opportunity is very exciting. We believe it'll be enjoyable for our students, and it fully supports the mission and objectives of the Devon School. Specifically, the Windrush instructors will help participants with impulse and emotional control, self-confidence, problem-solving, social skills, social awareness, adaptability, and confidence. So I look forward to, again, sharing at least one more update about this exciting program before the end of the school year. I want to also welcome Carolyn DeChico to the role of the district's art coordinator. Ms. DeChico, or Carrie, to her family and friends, ascends to this position after serving as an art teacher and art club advisor at the Caverian School for several years. She is an avid painter and sculptor, and she holds degrees from the Massachusetts College of Art and Design and Leslie University. She has supervised aspiring educators from Framingham State, Tufts University, and the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. And she has guest lectured in the art education departments of Framingham State and MassArt. This past summer, she completed the MTA and NEA's Teacher Leadership Institute and facilitated professional development surrounding culturally responsive pedagogy. Ms. DeChico and her students have entered work and art exhibitions at the Malden Courthouse and Everett City Hall and participated in beautification events around the city, including Beautification Way and River Green Park. So we are thrilled that Ms. DeChico is taking this next step in her career with us. Breakfast and lunch, as we all know, is an ingrained and integral part of the public school education that is easy to overlook, you know, during the school day. Consider the work that goes into providing a top-notch food service program in our 7,000-student district. And we're really fortunate to have a food service partner in Witten's that is passionate and dedicated to healthy, high-quality nutrition. Special thanks to the general manager, Alyssa Charles, a professional, responsive, and valued member of the EPS team. And a big thank you to the Witten's team members who are in our kitchens every single day, preparing and serving food, interacting with our students and staff, and making an invaluable contribution to the spirit of our buildings. Witten's employs 68 team members in the Everett Public Schools, 52 of whom live in Everett. And on average, our staff serve approximately 4,960 lunches. And on average, our staff serve approximately 4,960 lunches every day, which includes an average of 15 cases of fresh apples, four cases of bananas, three cases of fresh oranges, three cases of fresh strawberries, and dozens of cases of vegetables. In addition, Whitson's is engaged in our schools and community in a variety of ways, forming partnerships with the Everett Community Growers, for example, to extend opportunities to EHS culinary arts students. In this photo, Deputy Superintendent Kim Sein and Assistant Superintendent Kevin Shaw are pictured with a group of Whitson's employees during their recent company holiday party at Polk Harries. And everyone who attended this party had to provide proof of vaccination, which we of course encourage anybody who's throwing a holiday party to do. Schools and staff throughout the district are organizing holiday efforts and gift drives for our students and families. So this slide highlights just one of those. The Eighth Annual Toy Drive, held by the faculty and staff of the Madeline English School to benefit Portal to Hope. So Mary Beth Benedetto organizes the toy drive, which is always a bright spot on our holiday calendar. And this year, enough toys were collected for Portal to Hope to help nine families and 17 children. Portal to Hope is an award-winning nonprofit organization that helps victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking crimes. We are honored to provide any support we can to this essential community asset. Also, earlier today, Guidance Counselors collected gifts for its district-wide Angel campaign. And I look forward to sharing information about that effort during our first regular meeting of 2022. I wanted to provide a quick update on our internship program between the Everett High School and the Everett Police Department. Nine students are currently on board and working with Officers Romano and Williamson on projects and dialogue that foster an honest and healthy relationship between the EPD and our students. We have room for one more intern, and that spot should be filled by the end of this week. We will present again on this more comprehensively in the new year, but I just wanted to thank our school resource officers and our students for their continued work to expand and enhance this partnership. I am thrilled to also pass along thanks of the Everett Community Growers, who held a cooking demonstration inside the Everett High School Culinary Arts Department. So the Community Growers is a cherished organization here in Everett, and I know it's very special to several of you here tonight. Obviously, it was our absolute pleasure to welcome Kate Jenkins-Sullivan and the ECG team to EHS. According to Ms. Jenkins-Sullivan, the cooking demo, and I quote, "was the perfect opportunity to share information about an organization while creating and engaging an educational experience where viewers could learn about cooking these nutritious seasonal meals." So in this case, a roasted vegetable quinoa bowl. The ECG received great feedback from its team in the community and on social media. And we hope the partnership with this valued community organization continues and expands. And if you had not seen the cooking demo, we did just repost it on our social media today for anybody who didn't get to see it. Our vaccine rates are on the rise thanks to continued steadfast commitment by the EPS and the city of Everett to provide vaccine opportunities to all eligible residents. And I will talk more about those opportunities in a moment. In terms of COVID-19 cases, we have seen a small but noticeable increase in cases since we came back from Thanksgiving break. From September through November, we did not record more than five cases in a single day. But since the start of December, we've had eight cases on two different days, seven on one day, six on another. You know, these might not be striking numbers, but they definitely bear watching as we head into the heart of the holiday season. On the other hand, the overall percentage of our students who have been infected was reported at 1.8% in early December, which is much lower than the 3.9 statewide percentage. Before we move on, I wanted to just give a quick shout-out to our health and wellness coordinator, Julianne Whitson, who oversees all of our COVID-related programs and initiatives. She bears a lot of responsibility with an incredible amount of grace and determination. And I know I speak for the entire central office staff and the entire EPS community when I say what a privilege it is to be able to count on Ms. Whitson among our colleagues. Over the past several weeks, we have held a handful of successful pediatric vaccine clinics through a partnership with MGH. So this past week, MGH's mobile unit set up at the Parlin School, where more than 100 individuals received a vaccine dose or a booster. MGH officials informed us that their Everett-based clinics have been especially successful. Similarly, the city has been holding free pediatric clinics at Pope John, reaching hundreds of additional students, families, and residents. My thanks to everyone who works so hard to make these opportunities so readily available to our Everett residents in Everett locations at a variety of times and locations. And that includes members of my team and certainly members of Mayor DiMaria's administration. And before we move on, I want to just take a brief moment to wish you all a very merry holiday season and a safe and happy new year. My simplest but most important wish for all of you is that the season meets your best hopes and expectations. And I look forward to starting a new calendar year on January 3rd, renewing my working relationship with you and beginning new ones with the incoming members of the school committee. I will now take any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent. Regarding the clinics, the vaccination clinics, are those ongoing? Are we planning to do those weekly? Is that bi-weekly? What's the plan at least for the new year?
Yes, so MGH has been really wonderful, and they are going to be supporting us with additional clinics in January. And hopefully beyond that. But right now, we do have several dates that we are nailing down in January.
And once we do that, we make all the efforts to let our students and parents... No?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, since we're talking about COVID, Mr. Mayor, if I may, do you want to explain the availability of home testing kits to the public?
Sure. They can, I know today we had them available at City Hall. I believe we're going to be doing that all week, right? They'll be getting, you should be getting, if you're not signed up for the reverse 911 system, you should. But all you got to do is come to City Hall, fill out a form, address, email. And every resident that does show up gets a test kit. I believe two kits per home, which is about four home tests. We were chosen by the governor as one of the cities to receive about, I think, 14,000 test kits. The National Guard dropped them off on Friday, I believe it was. So if there are residents that do, would like a test kit, they just would come to City Hall this week during the normal business hours, and they would receive those test kits. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and I ask because I did get the reverse 911 message today. So, Madam Superintendent, you mentioned the Everett Community Growers. There's actually two videos out there. There's the one on the roasted quinoa, but there's also a very good one on making a salsa out of tomatoes. So you should probably post that one, too. All right. Any other questions we got in the superintendent's update? All right, hearing none. Thanks for your time. And the next, next order of business, please.
Thank you. Item number three is a request to go out to bid for cleaning services at Everett High School. And you know, I did have some talking points about this. However, I feel like Mr. Castronova, you know, kind of summarized the need even better than I potentially could. So we are seeking to contract with a cleaning company for Everett High School, and this will serve the dual purpose of ramping up our cleaning efforts inside EHS while freeing up personnel to support other school buildings. We stopped working with, do you hear that echo? Am I good? Okay, thank you. We did stop working with a cleaning vendor during the 2021 school year when the vast majority of our students were not in school, which was a savings of $300,000 to the EPS. But now that we are back to full capacity with full activities, we have determined that this is the best, most economical, and most efficient way for our maintenance and operations department to make sure our schools are as clean as possible. I sense and appreciate the urgency surrounding this matter, and this is the best way, we believe, to respond to it. In the bid packet before you, there is one proposal with two options. The first is for five nights per week, Sunday through Thursday. While the second option is for six nights per week, Sunday through Friday. This is, the six nights per week is similar to what we had in previous years. However, reviewing some of the conversations from early in 2020, we did want to make sure we provided multiple options as there definitely was some talk and conversation about the cost of vending out these services. And you know, costs have gone up. So we just wanted to make sure that we gave several options. The cleaning will be completed overnight from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. when no one is in our building, and a thorough job can be completed. We do ask that you give the maintenance and facility department and the Everett Public Schools the go-ahead to send out the bid packet as is, and the district will be able to receive two prices in order to make the best decision for the Everett Public Schools.
One second.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion has been seconded on the big package. I'll now open it up to the debate. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully ask, I'll make a motion respectfully, ask for a second to bring in Mr. Bond, the Director of Operations, who I know is in the building.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to fight Mr. Bond, the Director of Facilities, before us. Are those in favor? All right, opposed, so moved. Mr. Bond, can you join us, please?
I am on, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you. Mr. Bond, how are you?
I'm wonderful, sir. How are you?
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. So I'm sure you agree with this recommendation of the superintendent to go out for bid and bring a cleaning company, correct?
I do, yes.
Okay. Can we address the issues regarding the custodians and all the staff members? According to the custodian earlier this evening, mentioning about using their own money to buy cleaning products. So as the head of the department, what can you tell us about that?
Anything they've asked for other than small plastic bags. There was a shortage in this country, actually, for small plastic bags. Everything else is at the Adams School. The only delay in them receiving any supplies would be if they called at 7 o'clock today and said, "I am out of everything," because they didn't order it, and we didn't have anybody deliver it. So we would get it to them the next couple of days after that. That would be the only time they should have it. As far as them buying their own supplies, they've never been told by me to ever buy anything. In fact, I had signed signatures from the year 2019. They were not to bring anything in other than what we supplied them with. So if there's really that, I'm disappointed they don't bring it up to my attention before this.
Okay, thank you. So we are, the issue here is that, so I have two questions. One, do we have cleaning products? And what our staff said, there might be some issues with that. So are the cleaning products available? Or if not, is the issue that you are not receiving support from the administration to buy the cleaning products? Or because there is a shortage in the country, as we can see with all the issues that are happening in the country regarding shortages?
No, there's no, the administration's been fully supportive in providing supplies. We have it at the Adams School. I welcome any one of you to visit and see the stock of stuff that's even in my office. 150,000 masks are in my office, bowl cleaner, everything's there. So it's all welcome and available. All they have to do is ask for it. Again, the only issue for my custodians is they insist on calling the day oven and saying they're out. And that means they don't get it immediately. They get it within a couple of days. As far as what was said tonight, I'd be more than happy to discuss with any of them what they're talking about, because it's just not true. Again, other than small trash liners, we had three months of not being able to get small trash liners. They were back ordered. That was a supply shortage. But we have all the chemicals, large bags, masks, sanitizer, disinfectant, brooms, which was mentioned. And as far as equipment, supplies, tools, we have that at our building because the stuff we put in the schools vanished somehow. So I don't provide that in the school. They're at my school, and they're signed out.
Okay, and one more question. Thank you, Mr. Bond. One more question regarding the, how many custodians have we hired? I would say, I don't know, the past two months or three months? I know there were, I posted personally on my social media many, the job link with openings for custodians. Have we hired any? If so, how many? And which buildings are they at?
Well, we advertised, sir, for overnight cleaning. We hired one to fill out the high school crew, made five. So at the present time, we hired a new person starting on December 6th.
So you said you hired two or you hired five?
One. One, sir.
You hired one?
Yes, sir. That made us have five in the overnight shift at Everett High School.
Got it. So with the cleaning company, let's say that this body decides to approve this RFP. And with the cleaning company coming to the high school, are you planning to move those, the team that is doing the work at night to other schools to help with the cleaning for other schools? Is that the plan?
Yes, sir. They would, in effect, it would mean one person more at all the schools that we fill deficient, which would be the English School, the Caverion School, the Caverion School, the Parlin School, the Whittier School. We'd have one extra custodian who would be a fill-in floater. We currently average, let's just use last week, we had an average of five people out per day. And normally, we average three people out per day. We've had 156 sick days not related to COVID. We've had 50 other days related to COVID. I won't even get into vacations, which are something different. So we're averaging between three and five people out a day. This takes our staff down from 38 to 33 generally. Particularly, we're providing trips, the interns, which is such a great program, as the superintendent mentioned earlier. We are providing driving trips for them, getting them back to the schools with three custodians which get pulled out during lunch. So yes, we would move, the cleaning company comes in, we move these five folks to other buildings to supplement our staffs.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I know the mayor is next, but while we have Mr. Bond up here, does anybody have a question of Mr. Bond? You do? Okay, thank you. Mayor DiMaria, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bond, the custodian that spoke tonight said that they had a reduced staff by 26 people. Is that accurate?
No, it's not, Mr. Mayor.
That's not accurate?
No, sir.
Do we have a reduced staff from prior to COVID till now? Is there a difference in number other than the overnight contracting company that's working?
So, Mr. Mayor, we have, of course, there are eight house workers less and there is the contractor less. The number of custodians is exactly the same.
Okay. And the eight house workers, were they totally responsible for cleaning the bathrooms?
They were responsible cleaning the bathrooms during the day, yes, sir. They monitored the bathrooms, made multiple trips.
And that seems to be, I think, the, what I hear from parents and kids and residents is the biggest issue, staff is the biggest issue. The bathrooms during the day are deplorable. I can see, you know, not having someone cleaning them routinely. You have in this building, I don't know, 2,000 people, maybe more? How many do you have total with staff? And how many do you have in this building with students and staff?
They're just, they're 2,000 students, and you add staff, it's 2,400 people or so.
2,400 people? And how many people you have cleaning the building during the day from 8:00 to 2:00 with 2,400 people?
Well, 8:00 to 2:00, there are four people. But another gentleman comes in from 1:00 to 9:00, so it's really five up till 2:00, Mr. Mayor.
And is there standards that you follow regarding, is there like sanitation standards regarding per person? How many people you should have sanitizing, cleaning bathrooms?
It really comes to the number of bathrooms and the square footage of the building, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the issues we have, sir, is that, obviously, you're aware, we all are aware, the TikTok challenges. And the bathrooms this year, quite honestly, have been destroyed much worse than they've ever been in years past. You and I could walk out here and petitions ripped off the walls, toilet paper ripped off the dispensers and thrown into the toilet bowls. And our gentlemen, the custodians during the day, obviously are still responsible for lunch duties. So there's a period of about 10:00 to 10:30, 11:00 to 1:00, where they don't get in the bathrooms every hour on the hour. And when that happens, obviously, and that's also one of the busiest times for our students going in the bathrooms. When they tear the toilet paper off the walls and throw them into the toilets as well as the soap, that's one of the issues we're facing, sir.
So how, do we, I don't know if this is a question for you or a question maybe for the administration or for the principal, but if we are having issues in the restrooms from 10:30 to 1:00? But if we are having issues in the restrooms from ten thirty to one and having destruction done. I mean, I know at one time there was a certain gentleman that worked here that his sole focus was, was to monitor the bathrooms. I forget his name, but he's no longer here. Do you know who I'm talking about?
Who's so responsible? Well, we had, again, you mentioned house workers. We had house workers, a male and a female house worker at this school who just rotated bathrooms to bathrooms.
So they were pretty much monitoring the bathrooms and would probably not allow these TikTok challenges to happen, would you say?
I would say, Mr. Mayor, that they would monitor it more often than we are getting in right now, yes. But I'm not sure with these kids. I mean, I'll give you the story that I can tell. I walked into a restroom with ten students in there and I walked in and said, what are we doing, guys? And they said, we're all going to the bathroom. Well, of course, we have three urinals and four stalls and all ten people were out in front of the building, not doing anything. When I asked them, well, let's go to the bathroom and we can't all wait, they all ran out the door. And then when I got into the stall, they had pulled everything apart and written all over the walls.
So when I, when I, when I was in high school, we didn't, we weren't able to lump in and hang in the bathrooms. Bobby Leo was the principal and he and Mr. Malloy didn't allow that to happen. They ran a tight ship. So I don't know what's happening, that these kids are allowed to hang around in the bathrooms. But that seems to me to be a problem if they're destroying the bathrooms. And like the one, one young fellow that told me here last week that there's been puke and residue in the bathrooms for weeks on end. You know, we do, we need to address the situation, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Mr. Bond is the person that we should be talking to regarding this, but maybe bringing the, bringing the house matrons back, maybe having a monitor working in the bathrooms during that time. Maybe it's something we should talk to Mr. Norman about. But it seems like, it seems like an issue, it seems like a problem. And also not having supplies in this building to clean this building and having it at the Adams School because you don't trust your employees. To me, that doesn't, that doesn't sound to be effective. I think you need to have a better policy in place or system in place where you itemize the inventory that you have. And when they use that item, it's empty and it's put back into a certain place, you see it's used. I mean, we have tools at Public Works, they don't go missing. And we, we inventory them, we give certain people access to the tools. I mean, we're not buying new shovels and rakes and brooms and saws and, you know, all the time. It does happen, things do get lost. Trust me, I know that. But not to have certain tools or drills to fix chairs and tables here, just doesn't seem right. I mean, you, I personally know a lot of the custodians. I don't seem to think that any of them would be maliciously doing things. But I think you need to come up with a better system there also, Mr. Bond. But I think we should have, Mr. Chairman, maybe a communication sent to Mr. Norman. Or maybe have a, you know, your manager superintendent, you are now aware of this. Let's try to address the bathrooms, the cleanliness, the destruction. Thank you, Mr. Bond, for your time, you know, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one, if you don't mind.
Sure, yes.
Just so we can, when I, when I talk about the supplies at the Adams School, just so you and I all know, there are two pallets of cleaning chemicals that sit up on the second, down on the second floor. We have all the cleaning chemicals here and this building generally has their own tools. And when I was speaking of that from the Adams School, we generally provide the other schools. The high school itself stands alone, sir. So just so we, you're absolutely right, it wouldn't make sense to have a school of this size without supplies. Agree with you a hundred percent. They are downstairs in the second floor closet. Absolutely right, sir. You're correct.
Right. But I know there was a comment that was made regarding like if someone calls seven, seven A M., they don't get the supplies for two or three days. The city's a small city. Let's find a way to get the supplies to the school so we can keep them clean. But the other thing is, I think bringing the house workers back would be, would be, would be a, especially with the pandemic and with the, with the COVID and the viruses, it seems like they don't stop. I think this is a poor time for us to cut that service. I think we need to bring them back to clean the, I mean, you all hear it. You hear from teachers and staff and employees, the bathrooms are not the way they should be. And this is something that we shouldn't be fooling around with when it comes to, especially the viruses that exist. We shouldn't be cutting back on cleaning our buildings and keeping our buildings clean. So I understand custodians are pulled up to do different things all the time. I've been seeing that for years here. So I, you know, just putting a recommendation here or just maybe, I know, you know, I don't know the protocol here. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm done speaking. Thank you.
Ms. Caddello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bond, through you to Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond, when we did have house workers here, how many of them were assigned to the high school every day?
There were two, Mrs. Caddello. There was a, one female and one male.
So that was it? So they monitored every floor?
Yes, they did.
Okay, I don't know why I was under the impression that when we dismantled that part of our system, we had eleven people that were let go. Did you say it was only eight?
Since I've been here in two thousand eighteen, it was eight, yes. Right of that, it may have been more, Mrs. Caddello, I don't know.
Okay, okay, just back on that subject. It just seems like that's a lot of work when you have that many students and that many bathrooms on each floor to monitor. Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sonny.
Thank you. To Madam Superintendent, have you thought about bringing in anyone to monitor the bathrooms? And?
Well, actually, you know, we've done this a number of different ways. We, as you may have heard, there were administrative duties where, when I came here in October, where were several different things that, you know, we were attending to because it's not just about students in the bathroom vandalizing them. It's the fact that students are in the bathroom at all. I mean, that can cause all kinds of different issues, right? That there should not be ten kids in a bathroom at any given time. So one of the things that, you know, I had worked on putting in place was administrative duties. I actually sat in front of some of the bathrooms myself for, for that month. Because I do think that there's, there's several different issues there. And so i- if you are asking if I have thought about bringing in people just to watch the bathrooms, no, I have not.
Okay. I would like also to make a suggestion about getting pricing to see what it would cost us to bring in staff either part-time or full-time to clean and monitor the bathrooms. Because like Mr. The mayor said, as growing up, we always had someone in the bathroom at all times, not allowing us to stay there long or hanging out and cleaning as well. So just a thought process to see how much it would cost us and maybe bring in front of us so we can see what it would be.
Actually, we're happy to put that together. Mr. Bond actually had put together a proposal for me for, when I wanted to, you know, before we considered bringing back the cleaning company, we had thought about just reinvesting in our own custodians, what would be the cost differential? And he was able to demonstrate to me that it actually is more cost-effective to go out to bid for the cleaning company. So I'm, I'm happy to have him at some point come and bring back presentation for you. I do trust his expertise on that and the numbers did seem to make sense. Plus the, you know, I will say too, another thing we could bring in front of you because the numbers aren't exactly jiving. There was actually, we were looking through the budget books and from the past many years and there were not. So for example, in one of the budget books, it says like in two thousand nineteen, there were thirty-two custodians and right now we have thirty-seven. So I will say I'm a little bit, we need to go back and make sure because I'm unclear on where some of these, if that is the case, then we have more custodians than we did two years ago. And yet at the same time, I know that, so I'm still trying to figure out what the budget books are telling us. But either way, I actually have a set up with Mr. Ramsky and Mr. Bond this week to kind of look back at those budget books and actually see what was really happening because those numbers somehow aren't right. And it's hard to make a decision when you don't have data in front of you. And so we're going to be sitting down to look what were the actual numbers. There was a situation by which I guess some were halftime, you know, that they were indicated as being, they actually worked full-time, that they were indicated as halftime in the budget book. So obviously, that is a, that is a difficult thing for me to utilize in order to make an informed decision. And, and that was something that was brought to my attention by Mr. Bond. So we are going to be sitting down and looking at that a little bit more carefully because obviously you have a number of people and they're actually working, you know, more than it says that they're working, then we, it would make sense why there's changes in the cleanliness. So anyway, point being, I think that we do need to look at this a little bit more carefully, but I'm happy to. Once I've spoken to Mr. Bond and Mr. Ramsky more, we've kind of looked at the numbers and really made sense of them. And then he can also come before you with that comprehensive proposal and presentation of what the cost benefits are to both. The committee can make it, it will be at the will of the committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I do hope that the body does approve us to go out to bid.
Thank you.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to get back on the agenda item, it was during COVID. So it was right at spring of COVID when we kind of had to take a step back and look at our budget. And that's when we made some of these budget decisions, one of which being, why are we contracting an overnight cleaning crew when there are not bodies in the school? So now, and even last year, coming back, we did not have full capacity at the schools. So it was hard to measure what the effectiveness and impact of that was. I think now that we know, now that we've had feedback from operations, the right thing is to approve this, which is going to free resources up to be delegated to the areas most in need at the supervision of both Mr. Bond and, you know, the custodial leadership. So with that, I just move for the question.
Anybody else that has spoken yet? Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And to the superintendent and everyone, I think it's good that we're actually, you know, taking the step to actually find solutions to this issue. For, I know like the students did kind of have an impact on it. And I think communication with them would be great and efforts are being made. I've seen to monitor bathrooms in some way. And I would, I think you should consider that we are in a pandemic. So despite like, you know, the costs and things like that, that we should, you know, make an attempt to ensure that our schools are clean and sanitized. And, you know, the COVID cases are rising and stuff like that. So those things are very important to our community, community right now. And a question to the superintendent, so I'm assuming that, you know, this bidding process is going to take, you know, a while to actually get a company and stuff. So I was wondering if you could possibly, you know, share with us maybe some possibly like what we're doing in the meantime?
Yes, actually, thank you for asking that question because, yes, it is going to take some time. So in the meantime, Mr. Bond has been working with the custodial staff to plan overtime for the weekends to do intensive cleaning over the weekends. I don't know if you guys smelled the stairway on the way in, but it smelled amazing. So they did a great job this weekend. And that would be at the cost of about four thousand three hundred fifty dollars approximately per weekend until we are able to, to bring on a cleaning company. And also, you know, as we are, we will definitely communicate this to students, you know, what we're doing as far as to make this better. But I would be remiss if I did not make sure to let students know. And I hope, Ms. Lewis, you will let students know as well that, you know, this effort does include our students, right? Keeping a building clean is of course a lot easier if everyone is respectful and conscientious throughout the day. And I do want to mention that many custodians have told me and my team about the incidents and Mr. Bond mentioned that have contributed to some of the conditions we're trying to improve. You know, it's very important for families to do their part to talk to their students about keeping our school community clean and in working order and not falling victim to the influence of social media challenges and posts. And it's important for our students to reiterate those messages to their peers. You know, again, this is a group effort. Damage to our buildings is not only frustrating and costly, but it is disrespectful to our custodial staff who has been working so diligently to ensure that our students have a clean environment at all times. And just to Mr. Casanova, Mr. Vietre, and then all of our custodians, everything they said was absolutely true as far as the workload and what they've had to do and the fact that they have been here throughout the pandemic every single day. And I do want us all to, to not only thank them, but students and everybody alike to demonstrate to them that we appreciate them and that we respect them by making sure that their efforts are really, are spotlighted rather than I can only imagine what it must feel like when people are coming to our last meeting and saying the things that they're saying when it is in many instances out of the custodian's hands. So again, I just want to thank our custodial staff who's been incredible throughout the pandemic and send a message to all of our students to please, this is a teachable moment, that we all respect our school community. And that includes not just the facilities, but the people within it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any quick questions, comments? If I can to the chair with your permission, Mr. Bond.
How you doing?
Couple of questions for you. You had mentioned that you have one new hire. Are there any current racks, open racks out there that need to be filled?
Referred to what, Mr. Parker? I'm sorry.
Are you currently advertising for more custodians? An interview?
So at the current time, we are not. We, we went through approximately fourteen interviews, made some recommendations. We hired one. Since that point, others have applied, but we have not continued the process yet. We have now come forward looking for a cleaning contract to bid.
Okay. Going back to the house workers, there was eight. How many buildings do you have responsibility for?
We have ten.
Ten. Now, does that ten include the administration building?
Yes, sir.
Does it include the Webster extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you had eight house workers for ten buildings. Two of those house workers were at the Everett High School.
That's correct.
So you had six house workers covering nine buildings.
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's not one for one, is it?
No, it never was, sir.
Okay. So within those six, you had one person that worked three days a week.
That's correct, the English School.
And the remaining five, you had two, no, you had three that worked forty hours a week. And you had two that worked thirty hours a week.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so the number eight in itself doesn't mean eight full-time workers.
No, that's correct.
Right. So, no, so I'm going to, for the record, I'm going to say that if there's any issues with cleaning, it isn't all attributed to the lack of house workers. Because obviously, if you got ten buildings and it was eight house workers, some working part-time, it's just, it's just not the right math.
Mr. Parker, I would tell you that all of our workers, every one in the system can do more.
Okay. And, you know, I've got some lineage with the house workers, so I know what the responsibilities are. So, and, and including, I think, at the utmost of the entire staff and have. As far as the contract goes, let me just state one thing, and it was brought up by Ms. Lambert. March first, two thousand twenty, we were looking at the student opportunity, yeah, kicking, kicking in. And we were going to get seven more million dollars. All of a sudden, this thing COVID came in and we had to adjust our budget and reduce it because, you know, guidance by the state for five million dollars. So within a short timeframe, we went a twelve million dollar swing. Not to continue the cleaning contract was a recommendation of this school committee. We of the body, they recommended to the superintendent and Mr. Bransky at the time, not to engage with the cleaning contract. So let's remember that. And then coming into the new year, we all went through the same budget process and we did not recommend the cleaning contract. So a lot of that starts right here. My suggestion to the mayor is next January, we'll really kick off the budgeting process. I think those that are coming forward here in New, sit down, make it a priority. Let's see what the state's going to kick in. It should be up, it'll be the, you know, the, the second or the first year of the, you know, being student opportunity gap kicking a hundred percent. Give you some more flexibility. So, and that's all I got to say. So on that, anybody else on the matter? I'm sorry, do we, do we have a motion before us to? There is a motion on the floor, okay. So a motion is made a second on the floor to let the administration go for a bit of cleaning services, provide a package in front of us. Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to the bed, next item, please.
Thank you so much. So item number four is to request acceptance of the F Y twenty-two teacher diversification pilot program grant of a hundred and twenty-two thousand forty dollars. So we're extremely pleased to notify you that the Everett Public Schools has been awarded this considerable F Y twenty-two teacher diversification pilot program grant. Program grant totaling $122,040. The grant award, which we just received last week, will be able to support signing bonuses, relocation assistance, student loan repayment, tuition assistance, all of which are important tools in the effort to diversify our teacher pipeline. The next item on the agenda will give you an idea of a little bit more about how we've already begun this important work, but I respectfully request acceptance of this grant.
Don't move.
Motion made a second to accept this grant for $122,000. Any questions? Seeing none? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. So item number five is an update on the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education's Teacher Diversification Project. So again, we've been part of this pilot even before getting the grant, so it's actually two separate things. So we have already begun this work. I would respectfully request that you invite Director of Remote Learning and Instruction Anne Auger and Chief Equity Officer Corinne McCarthy to talk a little bit about already all of the amazing things that have been the ongoing efforts with this critical initiative.
I did it on purpose.
Yeah, right, sure.
Because, because I would never wanna have it be my last meeting without you telling me that I'm on mute.
I'm sure you missed this.
I did, okay. Motion made a second to bring forth to Ms. Auger and Mr. McCarthy. Others in favor? Aye. Ms. Auger, Mr. McCarthy, welcome.
Hello, could, could everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, great, great, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the Everett Public Schools School Committee. Before we begin, I would like to thank the outgoing members for their service to the Everett community, Everett Public Schools. I'd like to also welcome the incoming members as well. Tonight, we'll be presenting an, an update on our work with the professional learning community sponsored by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This, this initiative is to create a more diverse teacher and educated workforce. We are currently one of 100-plus school districts participating in this critical initiative. This district's participation in the Teacher Diversification Professional Learning Community, which is a comprehensive program that introduces educational leaders to proven recruitment, selection, and retention strategies. The program establishes timelines and benchmarks that will help the EPS continue to move this initiative forward. The Teacher Diversification Community is overseen by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and is designed to help our district implement a plan in service of achievement and equitable outcomes for students with the assistance of the district's administrators and staffs. Furthermore, we created a proposition statement that will, that has rung loud through Massachusetts, and I'm going to take a quick second to read that. So it's familiar to everyone. The EPS aspires to develop and retain a workforce and teaching corps that is both reflective and as dynamic as our student population. More than a quarter of our approximately 7,000 students are English language learners. More than 59% of our students are Hispanic or Latinx diaspora, and 15% are African American. To the best support our students, the EPS needs to attract culturally, racially, and linguistically diverse educators. To accomplish that, we need to establish the climate, the supports, and the systems that will make EPS a rewarding and long-term destination for talented teachers in the Northeast. The low percentage of diverse candidates in the teacher pipelines is a, is a crisis throughout the state on a national level, one for which there are no quick solutions. It demands a careful, collaborative, and a formalized process aimed at sustained growth and ever-increasing professional satisfaction among our valued staff. Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. A range of research points to the value of a racially and ethnically diverse teaching staff for all students, particularly students of color. Yet, as our population of students is becoming increasingly more racially and ethnically diverse, our teacher workforce is not. In fact, here in Massachusetts, over 40% of our students are students of color, while only 8% of our teachers identify as people of color. This DESI Professional Learning Community has also provided a collection of relevant research to justify the importance of this work. For black students, having a black teacher by third grade meant they were 13% more likely to enroll in college. Students who had two black teachers were 32% more likely to enroll in college. Schools with more black and Hispanic teachers and administrators have more black and Hispanic students in their gifted programs, respectfully. And low-income black male students in grades three through five, who are taught by at least one black teacher, are less likely to drop out, reducing their probability by 39%. Next slide, please.
So we're taking a, a couple of, a quick overview of our goals for this program and initiative. You know, the goals for the BIPOC, to retain and recruit BIPOC educators. Through our commitment to build a stronger pipeline to sort of recruit BIPOC educators, we, we've identified the following goals as strong first steps for our three to, three to five-year process. So during the 2122 school year, we will, we, our plan is to meet with about 15 institutions of higher education to explain our proposition statement that I read on the slide before, and create some support systems for our BIPOC educators. During the 2122 year, school year, the EPS will host three BIPOC student-teacher interns in the spring semester, and mentor supervising teachers on retention and mentoring strategies. During the 2122 school year, we will have three BIPOC candidates apply. The hope is to have three BIPOC candidates apply from institutions of higher education that we have recruited and met through our pipeline. We will, and then finally, the final goal is to retain 90% of our current BIPOC teachers and educators for the 2223 school year, with, by, of which we will send our, our staff survey on diversification of educators. Everyone benefits when they are, when there's representation in our schools. I believe that we can be the leader statewide in this work, as we believe we have the most comprehensive plan to increase educator diversity in Massachusetts for our district. So where are we as a district? Well, if, next slide, please, I'm sorry. Currently, this is the Everett Public Schools. As you see, 83%, 83.9% of the educators, I mean, of our students are BIPOC students, and 16% being white. Our educators, and conversely, our teacher demographics tell the opposite story, is, I mean, a very similar story. We, this sort of highlights the need for us to have more, and to work towards having an increased level of diversity in our, in our entire district. We have a, a strong core group of, of educators already, and to add more educators of color to the mix brings a, an added richness to the current climate that we have. To further rationalize this need for this initiative, the graph shows that our demographics, and then our teacher, and our teacher demographics are, as I stated earlier, are very similar, disproportionate, but the numbers are disproportionate between white educators and non-white educators. The gap presents a myriad, myriad of culturally responsive issues, disconnection with relevance, and how content can be used in the real world, and low, and low leverage when it comes to the value of representation. Adding and supporting educators of color in our district builds stronger relationships. It is conducive to creating a culture in our district that represents the very students and families that, that walk around and, and build our amazing city. And part of our initiative is the, is the, the hope of our initiative is to increase those numbers. Taking a look at our, for the next slide, please. Taking a look at the numbers for BIPOC educators found in Massachusetts classrooms in comparison to our district, we see some fluctuation due to initiatives like ours, as well as a statewide demand for more qualified educators of color through changes in practices, recruitment strategies, inclusivity in the interviewing process, pathways, and then retention plans. This is not an area of growth exclusively for Everett, based on this chart, but is challenging, is also challenging statewide. Our city can lead this work. We can build a sustainable pathway for educators, many of who share the same lived experiences of our students. This initiative is not to alienate or eliminate white teachers. It is a collaborative effort to attract BIPOC educators who often struggle to feel connected to, to schools. As exhibited by my own lived experience, there are those moments where of isolation, feeling undervalued, and, and many ways appreciated. This effort sends a message that the EPS is a, is a district that promotes educator diversity, experience, and expertise. And, and to repeat what I said earlier, I believe that we can be the leader in this work. Next slide, please.
As part of this professional learning community that we are a part of with DESI, we have given, we've been given a guidebook, which includes monthly action steps to help achieve our goals, which has been incredibly helpful. In July, we started this work, and we added specific DESI-recommended interview questions for teachers and leaders that target skills and philosophies related to closing opportunity gaps for our BIPOC students. And we also analyzed a cadre of data from the 2021 school year, including our selection and retention of BIPOC employees. We also identified gaps in our data. For example, we created a post-hire survey for all staff hired July 1st or after this year, and this survey will help us measure the inclusiveness of our hiring practices. We formed a committee, including two teachers, our chief equity officer, our HR director, our principal representative, and myself, to meet monthly and propel this work. We also met with Everett High School graduates and asked them about their experiences with teachers of color, how they impacted their educational career, and what we need to know as a committee to improve those experience for students like them with these initiatives. Next, we submitted an application for DESI's Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant, which you've just approved, so thank you, we did receive it, for monetary incentives such as signing bonuses and moving expenses for BIPOC employees. We've analyzed educator pipeline reports that DESI has provided us to see which education preparation programs our BIPOC teachers are coming from, and to fortify those relationships for increased recruitment efforts for the 2022, 2023 school year. Next slide, please.
In October, we, we ramped up our recruitment plan to, to add and increase access to, to a diverse hiring pool. We rolled out the aforementioned proposition statement, and we created, thanks to Ms. Auger and her hard work, we created some recruitment literature that we, that during our PLC with the state, we, we drew high praise for our efforts. We're very proud of that. We're, and in October, we really worked towards creating and trying to land our initiatives. In November, we implemented a retention strategies program, stake strategy that included state conversations. And a state conversation is when you meet with educators of color, and you have a, a very candid conversation about their belonging, how they feel about being in a district. We want to make sure that we're supporting educators, and we provide them the same very opportunity to be heard, seen, and feel valued. So the, having many of these state conversations have been warm and cool. Some of them are very tough to listen to, because you really wanna, you really want folks to really feel connected to the work. And of course, many of them are, but at the same time, you do hear some very, some tough stories that are, that are pretty much hard to swallow, but they do help us understand that this, it helps us see what the value of this work is. And we will continue to, to, to really knock, knock down the doors of, of supporting these educators. Also in November, we expanded our college and university visits for BIPOC recruitment. I was able to go and visit seven HBCUs down in the DC, Maryland, and Virginia area, and including Norfolk State, Virginia Commonwealth, Bowie State, Morgan State, Howard, where Anne Lorie Pierre, who you guys all know, got to meet with her, and, and she pointed me in the right direction. And this is going to lead to us, Everett Public Schools, being invited to numerous job fairs for the various human development and educator, education departments. So this will sort of increase our bandwidth to attract more educators of color. In December, we implemented a retention, our, our retention strategies, and we started actually having the state conversations, as I mentioned earlier. We then connected with BIPOC employees and talked about their career, their careers and their advancement, and what they see, where they see themselves in five years. And how can we support them with more meaningful ways for them to be successful, as well as create safe spaces for them to, to be heard? Next slide, please.
In addition to amending and examining our recruitment and selection processes, supporting our current BIPOC educators and their upward career advancement, and retaining them in Everett Public Schools is imperative. So we have partnered with Regis College, Southern New Hampshire University, and Bridgewater State University to subsidize undergraduate and graduate certificate programs for our staff, for our staff and their families, as an incentive to stay. So these are exciting partnerships that we're hoping will result in retaining our employees, and also helping them grow in the next level of their careers here in Everett. Additionally, we have an optional mentoring program for our current paraprofessionals and substitute teachers that affords them a free $200 MTEL test voucher upon completion to support additional or initial licensure attainment. And our recruitment of a diverse teacher workforce for anticipated openings for next school year is already well underway. As Mr. McCarthy mentioned, we are offering some incentives. We are offering an unprecedented $3,000 stipend for any undergraduate student to complete his or her student teaching practicum in an EPS school this upcoming spring, with the hopes that they choose to apply for an open position at the end of their practicum. We also developed the recruiting brochure you received in your information packet. The brochure advertises these opportunities, reiterates our proposition statement to emerging educators and institutions of higher education, while highlighting our hiring initiatives, our commitment to staying ahead of the curve for this important work, and why Everett Public Schools is a premier school district to begin careers and to advance careers in public education. Additionally, since September of this year, Mr. McCarthy and I combined have already met with 23 institutions of higher education in universities and colleges, including the historically black colleges and universities Mr. McCarthy mentioned, to market our incentives and our dedication to this work.
Every time we meet, we, we look at the data. We analyze what the trends are nationally. We, we investigate and look at the research, and we, we are constantly looking for trends. One, I'll give you an example. They say that many educators of color who co-in, who are cohorted when going into districts, you have a, a more, they're more likely to stay in your district, and feel like they could grow and, and sort of advance in the district as well, and feel more valued as educators. So, looking at data allows us and gives us a true opportunity for us to constantly interrogate the, the, the programs and the strategy, the programs we have and the strategies that we use in our everyday practices. And then finally, having established an affinity groups, right, and, and having an affinity group to improve communication and collaboration, which can make BIPOC educators feel more connected to the workplace, and build a network where voices could be heard and educators can be seen. I say that a lot, and, and there's a lot of depth to that, right? Sometimes if you, if you, as a educator of color, and this is not exclusive to Everett, my whole career, you know, you, I've had to really, really work through some struggles that you, that you have as an educator of color, where you don't know if you're being judged, or you don't know if your expertise is valued, or you don't know if your lived experience matters, right? And it's not really a, it's not a whoa-is-me cry, it's just more like a, let's recognize that folks could have, have some added value. Let's really use this moment to really educate others. And, and really, I don't even like this word empower, but really empower folks to build a true connection to all of their educators, and say, and sometimes asking questions like, hey, how are you doing here? Do you like it here? And if you don't like it here, do you love it here? What are your struggles here? And how could we support you in a meaningful and intentional way?
Okay. Any questions, comments about guests? Mr. Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our guests for presenting. This is very interesting, because I had the chance to meet- This is very interesting because I had the chance to meet a few months ago with the DES commissioner. And he told me directly, I was invited by the Brazilian consulate to meet with the DES commissioner because there are districts such as Framingham, Marlboro, Ashland and others who reach out to the consulate asking how they can recruit Portuguese speaking teachers, bilingual teachers. And the consulate reached out to DESI and met with the commission and as a Brazilian American and school committee member, they invited me to join. And the DES commissioner said that is actually one of his top priorities, what you just presented. So not for Everett, he didn't say that this might be a priority for Everett. That's his priority as a commissioner to recruit. We have amazing teachers in Everett, he says. Sometimes people get this confused, oh, you're trying to substitute us now, we're trying to bring in more to add to the amazing group of teachers that we have. And was very special and interesting to to join that meeting because the commissioner told me directly that this is his, once he he leaves his his job, he said, is if I can now have a higher number throughout the Commonwealth of BIPOC educators, that he said, no, that's that's going to be one of my, my, part of my legacy, he said. So I'm glad that Everett Public Schools is joining this effort because it is extremely important and and we need it. So thank you.
Ms. Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to our guests. I just wanted to thank you for not just looking at the monetary part of retention, but also the workplace culture. And I I know that you've been doing the state conversations, but do you see that going to a broader? Because pairing with affinity groups is one thing and giving a support group, but then the broader workplace culture may require some fine tuning, some further education, just some understanding. You know, as we've heard, and and it's not just an Everett specific thing before anybody gets angry, but I recall reading a recent news article, I was actually a Boston public teacher in a predominantly white workforce that was often called in to speak to students of his own cultural background. And you know, the the additional burden of wanting to take care of those students, but also being the only one to be able to do that. So you know, some of the additional layers, I think, can go even beyond just the group of educators that we're bringing in as far as education. So I'm not sure if that's something you're looking at, I'm sure you are, but I just wanted to bring that up.
The total unit, I'm sorry, was it, it was a question, correct? Oh, yeah, we are looking well beyond that. You know, obviously you have the affinity groups for for your buckets of of subgroups, right? And you want that feedback down to the students, right? You know, there's nothing, you know, the students are the axis of the work we do, right? And and this is not about, this is not an adult thing, this is all about the students and what we could add to their total high school or K through 12 experience. All adds to the vision of the K through 12 Everett Public School student. So beyond these affinity groups, they create some learning spaces. And then they create, it could create some cohorting, some thought partners. And then this higher order of thinking could have a long term plan and a long term effect on what we want to do as a district. So we say all the right things, now this is us doing all the right things. Safe welcoming, safe welcoming, be who you are. And that's, that's, that's a sign of a of a powerful district performing as a unit, no matter what color they are. And that sign is students get to come to school and be whoever, be who they are, who they wake up as, based on who we put in front of them every single day.
Anybody else from the floor? If I may, from the chair. So in in your chart, you had mentioned that, you know, 8% of the teaching staff in Massachusetts is people of color. To put that in perspective, about 40% of the student population in Massachusetts considers themselves a minority. So 40 versus 8%, you can see how much, how much farther we've got to go. And I don't know if you remember, Mr. Bells, but when I was taking you around the state to show you how to be a school committee person, and we went to the poverty summit in Worcester, that was one of the topics that at the time, Mr. Riley talked about too. So a lot of districts tapping in, especially places like Worcester, right? Or the communities that Mr. Bells mentioned, are tapping into their paraprofessionals. Because right there, you've got like, let's call it the bench, right? You know, people of color, look at, you know, our family engagement group, right? Haitian, Creole and Portuguese and and Spanish. You get a resource there or or bench there. Is there any, you had mentioned, you know, assisting paraprofessionals with the MTLS. But is there anything more being discussed within, you know, that group of employees that we can help out?
100%. We have, we have offered many of our programming to our paraprofessionals and our family liaisons. We create, we, as Ms. Auger mentioned earlier, we have a partnership with Southern New Hampshire through the duet program for degree for degree completion and educator pathway, which covers about 65% of their of their bachelor's and bachelor's completion. That is not just for the paraprofessionals and family liaisons, it is also for their families, their spouses as well. So these particular folks, the the paraprofessionals, for example, and the family liaisons who do not have a bachelor's, now have a path towards getting a bachelor's through a unique program that is, that is about 65, 60. If they're eligible for the Pell, they will, for instance, they will have to pay $167 a semester to get a bachelor's. If you're Pell eligible, if you are not, you will have to pay under $2,000 a semester before financial aid, right? So we have already aligned our programs to support our paraprofessionals. And for and for those who do have a bachelor's, we've already aligned them with our program with Regis, which is, which has given them up to 25% off with the hopes of us really matching that. We're just trying to be as aggressive as we can and to take folks from our community who have that institutional knowledge to really bring something extra, rather than onboarding someone. You know, obviously, we want folks from outside of Everett, but to onboard someone is a little bit more challenging. But if we have folks who have that institutional knowledge and then we could sort of create opportunities for them through our partnerships, through this initiative, it would be great. Every, every, every person in the EPS is a, is a, is an expert in something, right? And and we have an opportunity to really, really help them create their own vision.
If I could just add on to that, we, our substitute teachers and our paraprofessionals are disproportionately more diverse than our teacher, our teacher workforce, just to exemplify exactly what you just said. And I think what Mr. McCarthy and I have found is we post these opportunities for higher education, for MTL vouchers, but we also go down every single paraprofessional and every single substitute in the district and follow up with a personal email or a personal visitor or a personal phone call to make sure that they saw this opportunity, if they have any questions, to make sure that both of us introduce ourselves to those employees. So I think what I've learned the most from this DESI project is the level of intentionality that needs to happen for our teacher workforce to diversify. And so that has really led to these action steps. And making sure that those employees know that they have an upward trajectory right here in Everett. We've also, for many of our job postings for after school programs and opportunities, we've opened those up to paraprofessionals and substitute teachers, where in the past, maybe you had to have a teaching position to be eligible for those positions. And I think working with kids in a different kind of setting and having more ownership over student interaction and education and planning their own lesson and activities, it's given some of those, some of those employees sort of a picture of what it would look like to be a teacher. And I think that has also had a positive impact on their outlook for what's next in Everett.
I'm sorry, and identifying their experience, as someone who started as a para years ago, you know, I felt like that transition into that opportunity to grow, really transition it from a job to sort of being something that I just wanted to continue for the rest of my life. So I'm glad that you brought that up because I, if you're out there and you didn't get the emails and you didn't get the contact, please contact myself with Ms. Auger, free plug.
And lastly, last year for Black History Month, you held a YouTube forum with, you know, the teachers of color, especially here in the high school. And it was, for me, it was sobering to listen to the isolation that you spoke of coming to other individuals. And, you know, and sadly, one of the most impressive teachers we had on that piano left to go to a different school system. Has there been any follow up to that, to that forum? Has there been a part two? Have you gone back to those, as well as Constanter, let's say? And have you done another show?
Right, definitely, even my, the teacher you mentioned. Hopefully, just because they leave doesn't mean we stop recruiting them. We stopped recruiting them, it's a basketball tactic. But, but yes, there's definitely been follow up because actually it was, that was the the moment I knew that we really needed to, to to really push this and build initiatives like this. I never want folks to to feel that way that many of the educators spoke of. And if there are these pockets of, of, you know, of large ears willing to listen and willing to support folks, you know, we're all for it. So yeah, the follow up has really been by working with those educators and identifying other educators as well. And then, you know, seeing what it's like when maybe we'll do another one in February and to see where folks are now. I know Mr. Constanza, shout out to Mr. Constanza, who teaches our history of hip hop course, right? And that's represents sort of his growth as an educator here as well because he's, you know, he feels that he gets to do, he loves his job and he gets to do something that's within his heart by teaching that course. And thankful for the EPS for giving him that opportunity to do that, it's a widely popular class. But that just sort of is one example of us really following up and following through and supporting one of one of our valued educators of color.
Okay, thank you. And I I think you'll find this school committee is working in parallel with you. I mean, it's it's these people that brought back the student rep, so now that we have Mr. David Lewis here, wants to talk to. And this is also the committee that formed the Equity, Inclusion and Diversity Committee, that'll be perpetual. So with that, Ms. Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, and to our guests, thank you for your efforts in, you know, trying to diversify like the teachers or staff in terms of language and race because it does make an impact on a student. When we have like staff that reflect us in terms of color or in terms of just having someone to kind of look up to in a sense. And it does create a better connection for the students with the school community. So thank you.
Okay, with that, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We have a motion made in second to excuse the customary thanks. Thank you for preparing for us tonight and keep it rolling. All right, Madam Superintendent, the next item of business, please.
Thank you so much. And to Ms. Lewis's point, I think one of the other great benefits when our students, you know, see those who look like them, who are role models, they also envision themselves as educators. And hopefully that will help us to have more, build a pipeline of our own Everett students into the profession because we want more of that. Item number six is to request approval of district wide equity analysis to be conducted by Hanover Research. So your packets include a formal membership action plan prepared by Hanover Research to conduct a thorough equity analysis of our district. This analysis was recommended by our internal task force, or equity task force, actually, that includes external stakeholders as well, some of our community based organizations. It has multiple perspectives on it and it will be an invaluable tool in advancing the work that Ms. Auger and Mr. McCarthy just outlined for us.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion is made in second to approve the request for district wide equity analysis. Any questions, comments on the matter? See none others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. You have motion case number six. Next item, please.
Thank you. And speaking of retention of educators of color, item number seven is to request approval to accept an update to the superintendent's contact contract to replace February 28, 2024, as it appears under two term and three compensation to June 30, 2025. And I would like to just say a few words on this item. Some attention has been given of late to my future and I cannot speak for anyone else, of course, but I can speak for myself. When it comes to my intentions, there is no ambiguity. I have no interest in leaving this district, our students, our staff, our families and our school committee. I'm not looking for another job because I already have one that I care deeply about. I will always advocate for students, staff, families, as well as my team and my position. And I will rigorously but respectfully defend my performance while accepting the fact that no superintendent is flawless. I am incredibly proud of what I have accomplished despite the considerable and unanticipated challenges I have confronted in my first year as superintendent. As a district, I think we have progressed at a time when others have stumbled or faltered. We have partnerships and programs and grant dollars we have never had before. We have extended our reach beyond Everett and become part of a larger educational community where we are making a name for ourselves as models for other districts in instruction and in equity. The incredible initiatives we have begun, such as subsidized degree and certification programs for staff and for and for parents, day six programs for kids, summer programming that I wish I had in my own home district, the teacher diversification pilot, I could go on, but a simple glimpse of the greatness I believe that we are achieving as a school system and as a community. I understand that there is still much work to be done and I am prepared to do it. I understand that I am answerable to this community and to this committee as I should be. And I just want to oversee the school district professionally, respectfully and passionately. And where I have areas for improvement, I absolutely aim to improve. This morning, the Everett Teachers Association held a gathering at the high school as a call to solidarity. And they met with simple but always worthwhile aim of supporting one another and their collective interests. And to say this, I would just say awesome. I feel like this is a clear sign that the EPS is undergoing an important and incredible transformation. I would never want to work in a district that thwarts or discourages freedom of expression or healthy debate, and neither should they. This is all to say, not only do I want to say stay, but I still believe that I am the best person to lead this district into the future. People may not always agree with every decision I make, but I think that is the case for all of us, every day of our lives and whatever work it is that we do. But gains cannot be made without hard work, difficult decisions and debate. I have demonstrated, I believe in my decision making, that I always seek input and am forthright and honest. Again, knowing that every decision I make will not be met with 100% approval, 100% of the time. But again, my decisions are always made for the right reasons with the right end goal in mind. And that goal is to make the Everett Public Schools a district that is a model for others, that is the best in the Commonwealth and that offers our students every opportunity that they can fathom and supports them to achieve their greatest potential. So for the time you give me here, I will stop at nothing for our students, for our families, for our staff and for our schools and for this committee. Again, I am not looking just to make us the best we can be. My aim is to make us the absolute best.
Second?
Okay, motions are made in second for favorable action. Any comments, any questions on the matter? Mr. Capozzi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I want to comment on, I couldn't agree more with what the superintendent said. I think everything in life happens for a reason. Going back several years ago, had no desire a reason. Uh, going back several years ago, had no desire to be chairman, uh, became chairman of this committee. As a result, when our previous superintendent left, under circumstances we're all aware of, and, uh, uh, we had to find a new superintendent, we, uh, all voted unanimously to enlist the help of the, uh, Mass Association of School Committees. They guided us on a process to go through. That was an absolutely incredible undertaking. And people laughed at me at the time. I said, this job would be a job that would be sought after by people from all over the country. We had applications from Florida and I believe all the New England states. Ultimately, after a incredible, uh, process, we found who I believe is the, uh, top candidate in the state, maybe in the country. But bottom line is Superintendent Teheliani came here in an absolutely incredible situation. I want to make sure the committee's aware. Superintendent Teheliani did something that I don't think people remember. Fact was, we were looking to have the superintendent begin June of 2020. Superintendent Teheliani, at the time, the Assistant Superintendent in Boston, made herself available in March of 2020. Think back to March of 2020. Okay, by whatever reason, quite frankly, I personally believe it was by some sort of, uh, miracle situation. Superintendent, Superintendent Teheliani began in early March of 2020, and the next thing you know, we got hit with the global pandemic. Just try to think back as to what kind of situation there would have been if we had not had our new superintendent in place in March of 2020 and had her come in and begin in June of 2020. And again, uh, my statement in terms of, uh, the superintendent, I've had many conversations with her. Superintendent assured me, now I forget the, wherever this stuff comes from, rumors start. Sometimes people start rumors because there is something they're trying to accomplish. This rumor certainly didn't come from the superintendent. She's assured me that of her commitment to the Everett Public Schools. As I told her, hey, we had a superintendent who was here for 30 years. I'd like to sign her to a 30-year contract, uh, before I go. But the bottom line is, this contract extension, uh, is something that Ms. Murray talked about, her subcommittee delved into, it was brought up by the subcommittee, not by the superintendent. Now it's before us. Uh, and Superintendent, I believe this committee knows how I feel about her, her job performance, her evaluations were, were, uh, fine, more than proficient. I know mine was, uh, more than proficient. And as a result, this is something that, you know, Ms. Murray also brought up the fact that there's a sparsity of superintendent candidates out there. Well, quite frankly, I could kill us who's out there, uh, you know, who we have in place is just fine. And for my last meeting, all I can say is, if I had a part in this, if Superintendent Priya Teheliani is the legacy I'm leaving behind, that's just fine with me. So, uh, I'm supporting this, and I hope everyone on the committee will also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Abraze. Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, um, just as a member of the subcommittee that did recommend this, I did not speak last time, um, contrary to reporting. But I did want to point out the sentiment that this came from. If anybody recalls back this past spring, the superintendent shared with us a three-year strategic plan, much like she did when she first started. Now, what happened is that first year was lost. The Student Opportunity Act funding was lost. We lost an entire year of in-person learning. So that's what the sentiment was, to allow her to enact or act on the strategic plan that she brought in and that she was chosen two years ago yesterday, I think was the anniversary date. Um, you know, and to allow that, that fruition of the, the strategic plan. Um, so it was with that sentiment. It was not political, much like Mr. Abruzé put together a fantastic subcommittee and specifically did not choose people so that it was not political. Um, I would encourage people, our committee that is voting tonight, to look at this from the best interest of the students, as we have done with every vote prior, and to allow the, the full vision to come to fruition for our students. And, um, I think they will be the ones to benefit. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Anybody else on the piece before us? Ms. Murray?
I just, um, want to bring this back to students because, um, I think that's the heart of this. And it's unfortunate that we signed a contract that ended in the middle of a school year. That's not how contracts are written in education, because educators don't leave their posts in the middle of a school year. So it's really troubling to me to imagine that if the superintendent were at the end of her tenure here to leave, she would be leaving in February. And from February until June, our children would be with an interim, um, until the new superintendent, whoever that would be, would probably take over July 1st, which is the norm. Um, Mr. Forrest here was here for a very long time. I don't know if any of us were, um, sitting in seats like these when he began his journey as a superintendent. So I can totally understand why this was an oversight in the original contract. But it's never a good idea to have kids with an interim, anything, whether it's a substitute teacher, a temporary para in the room, or an assist, or, 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 um, interim superintendent. Stability and permanency is really what makes kids thrive. They really need an environment where they can trust that the adults around them are in there with longevity. And while people come and go, maintaining that academic year as a marker for hiring educators is very important. Um, so that's all I wanted to say is just from the perspective of our children, I would really rather not leave them in a position where they would have an interim for X amount of time until the replacement could be found. So that's all.
Thank you. Um, before I recognize Mr. Abraze for a second time, is there anybody else who has not spoken on the matter once that would like to speak? Mr. Abraze, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you, if I could address Ms. Murray's point. Uh, Ms. Murray, all I can tell you is I was actively involved in the negotiation of the superintendent's contract. And I guess what I could say is there were probably too many lawyers involved. Because there was myself, there was Attorney Galvin, and there was Superintendent Teheliani's lawyer involved, as opposed to, uh, an educator who probably would have noticed that. Instead, we were looking at a finite term instead of looking at that. And I personally was excited about the fact that, uh, at the time, Ms. Teheliani was available to begin in March. And I sort of suggested we jump on that opportunity and where we had the finite term, instead of making it for X plus three months or whatever that have been, we, we kept it the whole year. That is by way of explanation, but certainly not excuse, uh, I'll still stick by the, we had too many lawyers involved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seeing, uh, that there's no other hands raised, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cardelo.
I just raised it. I was looking for this. I thought we had already done that in the negotiations for the contract to extend it, um, with an option exercisable to the end of June of 2024. Now, this is not a signed contract. I don't have the signed one, but this was a contract that we were working off of. So I thought we were already at that with an option exercisable by the committee to go to June 30th, 2024. Does anyone have a copy of the signed contract?
Uh, I mean, this is the only contract that I have, but, um...
Excuse me, would the superintendent have something available that's been signed that says that?
Um, I would have to have the HR director check my personnel file. So, you know, when it was signed, it was January. I didn't come on board till March. So I wouldn't have been responsible for putting it in the, and I know Ms. Canty wasn't. So I assume it's in my personnel file. But, but this is, this is the same language that would be in that one. That one's also the one I have.
Is, is there ever an item on the contract that you're reading that you can share with us?
It's under, uh, number two term.
Yeah.
This agreement shall commence on March 1st, 2020, and shall terminate on February 28th, 2024, a period of four years, with an option exercisable by the committee to extend the same until June 30th, 2024, to coincide with the end of the fiscal and school year on the same terms and conditions during the preceding year. This agreement specifically excludes any rollover provision.
Okay, so no, we have not had that before us. But, um, you know, we were changing, uh, the date under, you know, term and, uh, compensation to June 30th, 2025.
Which is a whole year. But we already have it that it's exercisable to extend it to the end of June. So we wouldn't be leaving our students high and dry in March of 2024, or February 2024. I just wanted to clarify that, the way it's now written that I have in front of me.
Okay, I would, I would agree.
But we're talking about going for another whole year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, the motion has been made in seconded. Correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, with that, I'm gonna call for roll call vote. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Abruzé?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Mr. Panerisi?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
No.
Chairman Parker?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. The vote is five to five. The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for reconsideration.
Okay, uh, motion has been made in seconded to move for reconsideration. Uh, can have a roll call vote. Uh...
Mr. Abruzé?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Mr. Panerisi?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Chairman Parker?
Yes. Uh, the vote is five to five. Reconsideration has failed. Uh, next item, please, item number eight.
Thank you. Item number eight is to request approval for the Chair of the School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools to sign the initial compliance certification from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, for the Webster School roof replacement. So item number eight, um, uh, the signing of this document is required for the City of Everett and the Everett Public Schools to be invited into the accelerated repair program for the replacement of the roof on the main building at the Webster School. Um, and I respectfully request permission for, uh, Chairman Parker, Parker and I to sign this agreement.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second for favorable action on item number eight. Motion made in second and tried, uh, favorable action on, on number eight. Uh, any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Number nine, please.
Thank you. Number nine is to request approval from the Everett City Clerk's Office to use the Everett High School Center for Performing Arts and the Everett High School Cafeteria on Monday, January 3rd, 2022, for the city's inaugural exercises and coalition. I respectfully request favorable action for the city to host its inaugural celebration in our auditorium on the night of January 3rd. Uh, the request we received, in which you have a copy of, references a post inauguration reception in the cafeteria, but that portion of the festivities has been canceled, um, as of today, which is a prudent decision that we, we learned of. Uh, so we will only need to give approval for the inauguration itself, which is held in the auditorium.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second for favorable action. Uh, any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. You've granted the request. Item number 10.
Chairman, waive the reading on item 10, favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's been a motion made in second to waive the reading and favorable action on, on, on number 10. Uh, any questions? I actually have a question. So, uh, so it asked for the city council, actually, we should just read it. On behalf of the Everett City Council, I hereby request... Wow. We got the echo?
No.
All right. On, on behalf of the Everett City Council, I hereby request permission to utilize the high school library for the inaugural exercises on January 3rd, 2022, for the purpose of the Everett City Council to organize for the 2022, 2023 year. So my question is, if they're organizing in the library, where is the school committee organizing? Is it gonna be done in parallel? Are we gonna have two, you know?
Two different times. There's two different times, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. All right. And, um, and I'm sure where it's being broadcast on... Never mind. Thank you. Thank you for answering that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. You've granted the request. Uh, item number 11, please.
Waive the reading of all the rest of them and just waive the favorable action. Uh, item number 11 is to request approval, um, from the Everett Girl Scout Brownie Troop 7100 to hold weekly meetings at the Webster School in 2022. These meetings are held on Fridays from 2:30 to 3:15 PM at the Webster School. Currently, the troop consists of seven girls, um, and I respectfully request that we approve this request. Troop leader Jessica Minen recently reminded us that the Girl Scout cookie season is fast approaching, um, and we would not be, want to be responsible for disrupting that, uh, supply chain, so...
Favorable action on the order?
Second.
Um, favorable action. Lee Forrest, any questions, concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you. Item number 12 is to request acceptance of the FC 437 COVID-19 Summer Programming Reimbursement Grant in the amount of $200,000. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has approved our COVID-19 Summer 2021 Programming Reimbursement Grant for costs incurred, to address impacts of the pandemic from April through September of 2021.
Favorable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made in second for favorable action on item number 12. Any questions? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item number 13, please.
Thank you. Number 13 is to request approval to create the following budget accounts for approved items already budgeted for. Um, the Everett High School field trip account, the family liaison salary account, school committee reimbursement account, school committee contract account, school committee legal fees account, and technology maintenance account for every EPS school. So the creation of these bottom, budget items is simply designed to foster more trans- foster more transparency and to lead more reporting accuracy for the hundreds of lines that appear in our annual budget. These accounts are already budgeted for, but they were just not separately included as fiscal year 21 budget accounts, so we want to make sure they are in place for the approaching budget cycle.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on item number 13. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Item number six is items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is Everett School Committee response to alleged open meeting law violations by Mr. Stephen Fitzgerald from November 15, 2021 and November 23, 2021, submitted by Chairman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Fitzgerald has submitted over 80 complaints across all aspects of various committees, of committees and boards. The item before us, November 15th and 23rd, is the same complaint, the only thing that has changed the date. Today, I shared with you a third complaint. The only thing that has changed is basically the date. So I would ask you to allow me to respond, as I have, if I can get that in the form of a motion. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Ms. Canty, who has helped this process. Ms. Canty has been under no obligation to do this, as she is the Human Resource Director, but certainly, you know, her experience as an attorney has helped. And for the next incoming chairperson of the Everett School Committee, you need any help, I'm available. So, you know, I'm easy to find. You know, if you need any help responding to these allegations, because we're not gonna stop, I'd be more than willing to help you. So favorable action?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Item number two is to request that Attorney Robert Galvin provide appropriate feedback and guidance regarding conduct of school committee members, and this was submitted by school committee member Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to invite Attorney Galvin to the meeting?
I'll second.
Okay. On the motion, Ms. Cadello?
I thought in order to have somebody come speak before us, they would have to be put on one meeting to invite them, to send a letter to invite them to the next.
No.
No.
No, was that in our... I don't see... That's not our rules.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a vote to invite Mr. Galvin? I'm gonna be voting no. I don't really need him to come up, so can we take a vote to invite Mr. Galvin for us?
We have a motion before us, but people want to speak on it. Anybody else want to speak on the motion? Okay, I see Ms. Lambert's hand up. She's already spoken once. Anybody who hasn't spoken yet would like to speak? Ms. Lambert?
She made a motion. Motion was made.
Right.
And now I can debate on them. Thank you. So the reason I was inviting Mr. Galvin up was to clarify, because with the number of scenarios that have occurred over the past several months, there have been requests to individual school committee members, myself included. So I thought it would be helpful to publicly and on record ask Attorney Galvin what the appropriate nature of our meeting with, you know, union representative members for, as an example. Because in my own situation, I've been very careful to consult and make sure that no labor laws are broken when meeting with a represented individual. So I thought it would be helpful. I thought it would clarify for the public that does watch the meetings what we can and cannot do. So that was the reason for my asking Attorney Galvin to attend this evening, and if you want to vote on that information, that's perfectly fine.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Panerisi?
I think I'm muted. You can yell at me for being muted this time. I can see the information, but I think it's the last meeting of the year. We got four of us leaving. I think it'd be more helpful if he gives an explanation to the new members at the beginning of the year instead of now. It's the end of the year. I mean, I think it would be more helpful for new members coming in to hear what rules and regulations they have to follow. I mean, I don't know what it's gonna... I think it'd be more helpful to them than the last meeting of the year to just say it. That's just my opinion.
Call for a question, Mr. Chairman? Chairman, can we call for a question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, first of all, it has to be seconded, and call for the question has to be voted on.
There's a motion made and seconded to call Mr. Galvin up before us. We have a vote. Let's call for the vote. There's a motion made and seconded. Yeah, that's parliamentary procedure, Mr. Chairman.
We're not cutting off the people who want to talk. I'm not gonna cut them off. Yeah? You got me for another hour. Yeah? Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do understand my colleague, Ms. Panerisi's concern. There are six members who are coming back. There are four new members. There are six here who will be coming back, including you, Mr. Mayor. So I think if the majority, unfortunately, you said? Oh. So four new members are coming, so the sixth majority who are here, as one of them, I'd love to hear Mr. Galvin, so... That's fine.
Okay. Ms. Sarni?
I just have a question. I mean, I think based on what Ms. Lambert said, she's not looking for details or information about any one of us to be shared. She just wanted Mr. Galvin to come up and kind of give an overview for the public and for us as well of where our... Of where our responsibilities begin and end and where we're crossing boundaries and not to air any one individual or multiple individuals' issues. Am I wrong? Am I wrong? Am I misunderstanding? I just want to make sure I understand correctly what we're asking Mr. Galvin to do.
I believe that's the sponsor's intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sarni?
I agree with Mr. Panerisi that I feel that we should be waiting with the new members coming on and that Mr. Galvin be able to speak on it then. You know, as all of us, we've already went to classes, and if we have any questions or concern, we can call Mr. Galvin anytime. And we only have a few weeks left to bring on the new members, and I think we should wait for them, and Mr. Galvin can speak on that at that time. Thank you.
They may want to speak before we vote. Okay. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Mr. O'Connor? A yes is to bring Mr. Galvin forward; a no is to decline the sponsor's request.
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Mr. Panerisi?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni? Chairman Parker?
Yes. Five to five. Motion fails.
I'd like to rise on a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman.
State your point.
And so, again, and maybe I miscommunicated, what I wanted to make clear to the viewing public, as well as the folks that we represent, whether you're a resident, a student, a staff member, is that the seats that we sit in are difficult, and there are boundaries. And so when a request is made to meet, it cannot always be possible. There is a clear line of delineation in our responsibilities regarding operations versus policymaking. And so we're not being negligent in our duties when we guide you to the appropriate party to get your particular situation resolved. That may be your union representative, that may be a member of the administration, or a building leader, or redirecting you to a classroom teacher, whatever that may look like. I wanted Mr. Galvin to explain a little bit further for those that are seeking input from your school committee, your represented school committee members, that there are restrictions. And I never want anyone to not feel listened to. I'm always happy to listen, but I may not be able to respond for exactly those situations. And so it was not an advisement for any new incoming school committee people. It was more a recognition of the hard work that we've done over a long period of COVID, my entire term, essentially, where it was all about communication and connection and do I wish I had the power to do more? Sometimes, yes. Sometimes, I'm grateful I'm not, to be honest. So as we close out, I just want folks to know that there are restrictions. I wanted the people we represent to understand that, and that was why I invited Attorney Galvin to speak tonight. So with that, I... I close my case.
Thank you for your well intentions, Ms. Lambert. Unfortunately, the body did not agree with you. Next item on the calendar, please.
Roman numeral seven is subcommittee reports. Item number one is Rules, Policy, and Procedure Subcommittee, held on Thursday, December 16, 2021.
Ms. Sarni? Every lady gets told the least once.
That's my first time. Ms. Lambert brought forward some changes that were very good recommendations, and I want to make favorable action on item one and two with the changes. We have it bold. Item one has changing out of control student to mental health student in distress, and change every instance in the handbook reads out of control student to student in distress. And that's on number one. On number two, it was under to change ad protocol in case of death of a student slash staff member to direct student slash staff to the district's social and emotional manager. So I want to make favorable action on those two items. On item number three, we just asked to refer back to sponsor and bring it back, Ms. Lambert, to bring it into the following year. We didn't have the proper documentation. We are looking forward to reading it and going over it in the rules and policy procedure to implement that, but we did not have that actual document that evening to go over it. So item one and two favorable with the recommendations. And item three, refer back to sponsor. Thank you.
Would you like to take items one and two collectively?
Yes, please.
Is there a second on that?
No second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for favorable action on... Actually, we need a motion first to accept the report.
I make a motion to accept the committee meeting and place on file.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept the committee meeting, says presented, place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So the second motion is to collect, take recommendations number one and two collectively, and move for favorable action. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. You accepted items number one and two. Next, end my business, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Amendment number three?
The appropriate motion was supposed to be made to accept the emergency management plan as amended, was the motion that we were supposed to make on that last one. But it's...
Was that... That was number one or number two?
I believe it was one.
Okay. I mean, the motion was to accept that recommendation as amended, right?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be more comfortable? Okay. Recommendation number three is to refer back to sponsor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Refer back to sponsor. Bills and payrolls, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make...
Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,502,039.15.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,502...
$502,039.15.
$502,039.15. Roll call vote, please, to approve?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes. Standing affirmative, we have approved. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,502,039.15.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,502,039.15. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes. Standing affirmative, you have approved payment of the bills. Please.
Thank you. Item number 12 is headers for executive session, and we have three items under executive session. Item number one is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A3, to writ to Everett Teachers Association grievances. This was a matter that had been postponed, however, we have not heard back from the ETA regarding this item.
Okay, so the ETA will not be joining us tonight for this particular matter. I would entertain a motion that we would vote on this and vote no, therefore killing it, because it is the end of the legislative year, and it could be reached just next year. So motion has been made and seconded.
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes. So the matter has been... Is dead due to the end of the term. It'll be taken up at the next legislative section. Number two, please.
Thank you. Item number two is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to writ to Everett School Committee members, no action taken at meeting of December 6, 2021, due to lack of quorum.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
A second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to go into executive session on item number two. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Yep.
Ms. Sarni?
No.
Chairman Parker?
Yes. So the motion is five to five. So before I read the record as far as the vocals, I'm gonna give those an opportunity that voted no to vote yes. And the reason being is that there has been a formal complaint brought before this body that needs to be taken action. And do you want to go on record as blocking this motion and blocking this conversation on a matter that could resolve in some type of litigation? on a matter that could resolve in some type of litigation? So, um, you know, we've, 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 we've learnt a lot over the last couple of years that when someone speaks up, um, and they wanna be listened to, that, um, they should be. So, pause for a second, look around the room. If you wanna change your vote, let me know. Because I, for one, I am on the record as, uh, wanted to go into executive session to discuss this matter. So when the time comes at a later date, Frank Parker did something about it. Does anybody like to change their vote? Okay, so motion is five to five. Uh, the motion to go into executive session to move this matter has been killed, and there will be no discussion in executive session. Item number three?
Item number three is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3.
Move to go to executive session to discuss this.
A second.
Okay, and, uh, please know before we take a vote that not only is Ms. Galvin is here for this particular session, but I believe Ms. Moore is here also. So we do have invited guests that have come a long way to talk on this matter. Uh, motion made and seconded for favorable action, um, and can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes, attending affirmative, zero to negative, we will convene an executive session on item number three. Um, and we will adjourn an executive session. Thank you.